It looks like it's six o'clock. This is Town Hall Board Trustees Regular Meeting, February eighth, twenty twenty-fourth, Town Hall Councilroom at six P. M. Number one, call to order and roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Two, report from the Town of Hennessy A. D. H. O. C. Agenda Agency.
Apple.
Excuse me?
Apple.
Okay.
Zoom tight.
I've seen none.
I have something.
Okay.
We're going to install the last three way signs, wayfinder signs, I guess the official name, this week, all the signs that point you in different directions. And they're going to go at, two of them at fifty-one eighty-one intersection and one of them out near Forties, at the Mitchell Road, eighty-one, fifty-one, whatever that is. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Three, consider approval of the consent agenda. A, minutes of the January meetings. B, approval of claims as follows. January purchase orders, two thousand five hundred and seventy-three. Two, February purchase orders, eight thirty-eight thousand, eight seventy-five, eighty-four. February R. S. T. F., thirty-one thousand, seven seventy, eighty-one. February Library Fund is eight nineteen thirty-three. February Street Alley Fund is three thousand, three hundred and one dollars and twenty-eight cents. C, accept the department reports. There is in your packet the reports for the Hennessy Department, the Fire Department, the, was it the Water Department? I thought I read a Water Department.
Yeah, it's probably at the bottom because I had copied it last.
But there's several reports in your packet. And I really thought those were fantastic. I really liked them. I've seen it. I agree. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Four, citizens' comments. Yes, ma'am.
I have some questions, but could I wait until the Town Administrators' report?
Yes, ma'am.
So you ask them? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
I've got a question, Cliff.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the agenda. We have, I guess, Kelly, this question's for you. We have citizens' comments on there twice. Is that a typo or is it supposed to be on there twice?
It's always been that way.
It's always been on there twice?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay. Number five, Town Administrators' report, purchases and new employees.
You guys all have on a report, anybody who wants a copy of it, it's really welcome to ask for it. Don't have any to ask, that's fine.
Okay. I heard that your two new employees are really doing really well.
They are.
Things are going well.
They are. It's nice because I've been able to free myself out to do other things.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. A question on the report about the state coming in on the audit.
Mm-hmm.
And you mentioned in there that all five of the trustees, that was discussed with, whoever came, who did, who came to do the audit?
Mr. Morley. And he met with each trustee separately, in case you thought that it was a...
Yeah, I wanted to make sure.
Yes, no, they, he met with each one of them separately.
Okay. Is there going to be any report from the board members about what happened during the conversations that you had with the auditor? I mean, was it anything that needs to be made public? Was there any problems? Were there any problems that he brought to your attention?
What he did to me, he just asked some questions of what we did.
Oh, okay. He didn't talk about anything about the audit?
No, no, these were just questions, questions.
Oh, questions for board members?
Yes, questions for board members.
Oh, okay. And also, will they make some kind of an, I know, didn't you all vote not to have an official audit here? I mean, because it was going to cost, what was it, seventy-five thousand or something like that? What was the amount?
This one's costing the town as well.
Oh, okay.
I mean, the town's, they're billing us ongoing, correct?
Every month, yes.
Oh, so what are the costs on this?
It's based on how much time they spend throughout the month and then they bill us. They did not give us a, this is how much this is going to cost. It depends on how long it takes them. I do know that Mr. Morley, who's the main one on our staff, who's been asking for stuff, he did tell me when he came in that he has finally finished up most of his other ones, so he is going to focus now on the Town of Hennessy.
Okay. So do we, have you gotten a bill from them at all yet?
Yes, we've received three bills now.
Oh, how much have those been?
About thirty-five.
Yeah.
Totaled up ten thousand, five hundred so far? Okay, that doesn't include the visit that he's made?
No.
The three days that he was here this last week?
If I can say one more thing?
Yes.
When he got done, when visiting with me, and this was me personally?
Yeah.
He said, this is going to take three to four months for him to do his. And then he sends it to another person to do it. And then he sends it to another person. So it's going to be quite some time before we hear back from the questions that I was asked.
Okay.
I do know that. He did tell me that.
Okay.
And besides that, he didn't inform me of anything else.
So did the town request this, then?
No, this was the DA. This was, this was...
The district attorney, that's right. I forgot, okay. And so will they, they will have to make some kind of an official report on this, correct?
Yes, he will. Like, he's going to, he's doing, and this is just what he's told me. I don't know what he told everybody else.
Okay.
But he told me that he's doing all of his investigations and then he will write a report. Once he gets done with his report, he will send it to his boss. His boss will review it and come back or any questions or add additions, you know, edits. And then once that boss approves it, then it goes to the actual state auditor, Cindy Holt. And once that's done, then it will be a final report that will be released to us and the public.
Okay.
So will it go to the district attorney prior? Because it was district attorney...
Maybe before it comes back to us, maybe. I don't know. I just know that, I know that I asked about how their stuff, because I asked, how long are we looking? Because, you know...
He told me that the DA would have to review it after they get done with all the audit, the DA would have to review it.
Oh, okay. But that, that report that they make, that will be made public, correct?
Yes, once it's given to the town, yes.
All right. Yeah, okay, great.
He told me, anyway, that all board members would be, would be, they would come back with us either in a Zoom meeting or at a public meeting, or more likely at a Zoom meeting, and tell us their findings, if there was any or no.
It'd have to be a public meeting if they're together.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Going on to number six, other scheduled business discussed, approved, denied, reject, and/or take action on the following. A, virtual presentation by Evan Joyner of the Diligent Company Community on Automated Board Meeting Agendas and Minute Building Programs at six fifteen via Zoom.
Mr. Mayor, he is, we told him about six fifteen-ish, so can we go to the next item and come back as soon as he pops on?
Okay, thank you. B, discussion with possible action to approve the purchase of a meeting software, okay? C, discussion with possible action to approve following ATV rodeo to take place east of the soccer field on Cemetery Road during the car show.
All right. I guess this year on our car show, the DOT approved that we shut down, that we get to shut down eighty-one coming through Town of Hennessy. Anyway, we hold the ATV stuff north of town. They'd come to us, and I didn't know how to tell them without bringing all five of us in on this, about having it down at the soccer fields, the ATV rodeo, rodeo, the razors, the four-wheelers, the motorcycles. Mark, do you want to tell us?
Let me lead in and then Mark can answer. My goal was to get everything south of the highway. I really wasn't crazy about people crossing, and it was so separated from the main events, it was, I don't know, I didn't feel good about it. And the whole point of this is to support our businesses and things like that. So with this way out there, you know, the only one that was really helping was Howbes at the time. So we're looking for alternatives to bring all the events inside city limits. And then Howard and Mark came up with this idea to find an alternate place for the ATV races and those kind of things. So that's where we are now.
I mean, we just want to know if we could do it on the east end. It won't have nothing interfere or tear up, nothing down there where they have their soccer deal. It'll be like at that other driveway from there up the hill, you know, where the trees, grass and all is.
That was my question, because just last year, we just said that we're going to try to help them take care of the soccer field, and we don't want to tear up the soccer field when we're trying to have more...
No, I mean, if you say we can do it there, we'll figure out some way to block that across there to where I don't even have to worry about them getting down there, tearing up, you know, because they got a good stand of grass and everything down there now. Where it is staying, you know, they got drive for the soccer field, then they got this other drive.
Right.
So from about right in there, that way east would be where we'd be at.
Where are we at on liability with something like that?
I don't know. I, this is the first I heard of it, so I don't know. I thought the trucking with Mattigan.
Yeah. I have no problem with it personally. I'd just like to make sure that our...
I know they, they have building to cover us. They, they haven't, they haven't signed a waiver, right?
Yeah, we got a lawyer-drawn-up waiver that they signed, but, you know, everybody that runs and all those stuff.
Is there not a gully that goes on that east end, though?
Um, kind of on this side. I think I can hang, I think I can hang to the south of that, kind of where they've mowed, kind of up in that hole, you know, right to where that road goes up to the trailer park or whatever. I think I can hang in there and make it work.
The other part, too, is maybe if we could do it right there, is on the south side of the soccer field, because they could come in up, you know, on that side, kind of down around the volleyball or the mud deal, come on the south side of it. So I know the waiver deal is going to be the biggest thing.
Yeah.
You know, being a racetrack promoter, I know that the waiver thing is, you know, is very important that we have it signed, you know, so I do know that.
I'd like to see us get a copy of that and have Tiffany run it by our insurance carrier. Because if we decided in March, that'd give you still plenty of time, wouldn't it?
My, my deal...
A March meeting.
So what would you say, May nineteenth?
May nineteenth, yeah.
My deal on all that is, just like the racetrack up there, that's on county-owned land. It don't matter if anybody gets hurt, whether it was up north of town, Main Street, doing helicopter ride, Town of Hennessy is going to get sued. You know, our pockets are deeper than any other pockets. So, you know, and that's, you know, when they, when they listed me the lawsuit, I bought them in on the tugboat pole. I got sued thirty-some years, or thirty-some times in one year. The first one they started with was Garfield County.
So my question is, who's sponsoring this? Like, is there, and also, is there a, is there some type of, you know, with this, is there some type of umbrella policy for anything that happens with the car show?
No.
Because we have the burnout, we have all of this, so that may be something that we might want to...
Recording in progress.
Oh, hold on a second. Let me talk to him in just a minute. Evan will be with you in just a moment. We're finishing up an agenda item. Thank you.
That's, that may be something that we discuss. We have, by the way, for you guys, we're having a meeting, when's it, Tuesday? I don't know. I think it's, I think it's next Tuesday.
I think so, yeah, Tuesday.
To go over how all this is going to work, and this is probably a topic that needs to be on there, that, that insurance coverage needs to be verified for the whole thing. So, you know...
I'll ask them.
Who's having the meeting? I mean, who's sponsoring?
I called the meeting.
Okay.
But it's, it's a planning meeting, because this year, Tony's done it, like, almost entirely himself.
Right.
Up to this point, and it's just gotten too big. So we've had a couple of people that are going to be on this committee thing that we're putting together, Randy's one of them, that everyone will have an assigned thing, like, someone's going to do parking, someone's doing safety, someone's doing whatever. And so that would be the committee that's sort of like running it, you know, if you would, like the Pat Hennessy Committee was years ago, kind of thing.
I was just curious. Didn't know.
I know you can get, I know you can get insurance for this. Like, the racetrack, it only costs like fifteen hundred dollars for the day, no matter what you pay.
Single-use insurance, yeah?
Yeah. I mean, but even if you block the street off and cars cruise it down Main Street, somebody got hit, they're going to sue us, you know? Town of Hennessy, it's just, you know, we're having the car show, whether we sponsor it or not.
I think Jack's having the car show.
Not me.
But it's the same way with the wine festival.
We have insurance. Lisa and I are, that's insurance.
So...
So something like that needs to be in place?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I agree?
So to answer your question, we're going to have to have more information, and we need to do the insurance and...
I'll get a copy of that waiver that we have them sign.
Got it.
And get it to you.
Can you get it to them?
And then, you know, we will, because I think, I think the waiver I got is one Tony gave us, so, you know...
And while we're on the soccer field, I didn't know how to bring out the board, you know, so we could all talk about it and discuss it, you know, without calling each one of you, whatever, you know, so that's why I put it on the agenda.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
But also, to talk about soccer field, I guess there's like five teams this year that's ten and under, that's playing in the Hennessy League or the Kingfisher League, and they asked, you know, what they need to do about using our soccer field down there. I did tell them to get ahold of Tiffany. I didn't think that it'd be a problem, you know? We don't have...
It's kind of like the gymnasium, the little league uses the gymnasium, and it'd be kind of like...
I didn't know if they need to schedule appointments or what, so, but more the use, better it is, you know? I appreciate you showing up, Mark.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
If we could go back to the A, virtual presentation by Evan Joyner, the Diligent Community to Automated Board Meeting Agendas and Building Program via Zoom.
Hi, Evan.
President, everyone, how are you doing?
Good. We have, hold on just a second.
Good.
Now you can see us. Okay?
I'm here, and hey, everyone, I'm enjoying.
Hey.
So we have our town board here, and then we also have a couple of staff members and then our paper people. So if you can just start, start in with how you kind of did with Kelly and I, he's going to explain what we, what Kingfisher uses, similar to what Kingfisher uses, so...
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for sitting and staying here. So for today's conversation, I was going to walk through the very high level of the platform, but also just highlight some of the things that actually made it easier as an admin team gets the agenda together for you, the board, how it can actually publicly publish it, and even in your own notes, or even basically your own area as a board member, where you can actually be able to make, edit the notes, and also be able to find information in the process during the meeting discussion. So if you need to run through the meeting that occurred in August, possible is to find it with the national system. So again, I'll take you through the system, but again, if you have any other questions following or even during the presentation here, don't hesitate to stop me. I'm happy to address any of your questions. So really quickly, is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. So essentially, what we see here is actually a public-facing site that we actually built for you. And with this public-facing site, this is actually where all your agendas, your minutes, and everything will be publicly published, so that anyone from the public can get and find information. And so I'm actually going to put one of our current clients, this is Tava Carbon down here out in Colorado, and they do a really good job because they do a very efficient way of not only just being able to house this document such as that their agenda is amended here, so on the right side you can see some of their recent meetings that have taken place, where someone from the public can easily just click right on that link and see the agenda, as well as the video that you all take within YouTube, which can directly associate it with the agenda. But even as someone from the public wants to take a look and see the actual supporting documents that are associated with the agenda items, they can actually even find that here as well, too. So here's actually a document here that they actually have for like an application of an appointee for a town board's report and factory report, along with the supporting conversation that's also here with the YouTube recording. Very common question comes up, is there any extra confidence in those notes? I already said you have everything set up in your room today with having the camera, you have everything on YouTube. Literally, you take the YouTube link, you pop it into the system, and it actually associates those, the handy looking for you. So let's just say there's a situation that the public or anyone wants to know, understand, hey, we want to understand what's going on with budget carry within planning and building, or they want to know any information. Just with the search capability here on the front end, if someone from the public, if they get any one of those, if the evening staff can find information here, so just by searching, basically just doing like a search here where there's like budget report, by typing those keywords, it's the same exact way as a Google search, where it's actually be able to find that information within all of the board documents, so even your agendas, your minutes, and even the supporting documents that basically accumulate to make the entire agenda package. So another one point of conversation was having massive packets that were also being built to have this information. Simply, the system digitizes all that information for you, so that you can actually sit here and someone wants to request that agenda package for further information, they can easily just do a Google search of the site and be able to find that information. So if I, that's one of just to highlight that we actually built this entire page for you, it comes along with the service, does not need anything extra you pay for. But, you know, essentially, that's one of the highlights this from a very high level of promise could actually help with, again, like paper costs, but also just making sure things are hopefully available there for you for the public. Any questions you have before I show the, you know, the nuts in the cranium of the backend? Any questions that anyone has?
No.
So the backend here, this is actually the area where you not only just build the agenda, but also you have the boarding commission, you can actually be able to go into the agenda itself. So one part of it is that, as you can see here, it gives you a detail of the agenda when you're putting it together as a team. So it's actually like a real-time dashboard where it shows you your current status. So as I'm taking a look at some of my upcoming meetings, I realized that our special meeting on February twelfth, we've actually shared the draft with our board. So you can actually be able to go back into there, make edits appropriately whenever you need to, and then you from a board can always be able to come back here and see if you have the most updated version, if there was any update through the agenda before your upcoming meeting. Instead goes for any other board of the meeting. As you can see, I have my special meeting, but also you can house any other board of the meeting, like your regular meeting as well, too. So just really quickly, just to touch over key things that are associated with like what the final version of the agenda would look like. But essentially here, this is where you again make those simple edits, again, you can add a supporting document to your attachment to the agenda item. If there's any issue where maybe a report, for example, cities from the city clerk or town clerk in your situation, is, you need to go ahead, if the public works, literally just dragging and dropping it automatically renumbers the entire section for you. Same goes if you want to actually pull the entire section and move it ahead of another one, the system actually does automation for you, so you actually don't have to worry about that. Now, the key pieces that would actually be helpful from a mission perspective is that we actually have this ability here where it's actually an area for member notes. And what this does is that if there's any discussions that are coming up in an upcoming agenda, maybe one for the administrative team can actually add certain notes, especially when you're taking a look like a large documents where it may be essentially a seventy, eighty page supporting document, and there's really just key points that you need to take a look at in the upcoming meeting, that can actually be a note that your team can highlight here for you to make sure that you review it, so that you can have a discussion with the board when you come to your meeting. And so once everything's all said and done, let's just say that this agenda's good to go. Simply just by sharing it, you can actually now at that point have the most up-to-date, edited version of the agenda. Any questions you have so far? So this is actually what the agenda would look like from a board perspective, and mind you, not only can you receive the board agenda by email, which I'll actually give you a quick visual of what it's going to look like from here in, and you can actually receive that email, so here's what it'll look like. You're going to get a notification that the agenda has been updated for the special meeting, and simply by clicking that. But also, you can get it in the text message form as well, too, if you like to use your cell phone. So from a board perspective, you'll actually get this view here, where you actually have a, it's just the entire agenda right in front of you. Not only is it where you could actually just have the outlines, but even as I've shown before, there are those briefing notes as well that's private to you as a board to understand, understand what to review before the upcoming meeting. So in this situation here, I realize that they're an appropriate page that I actually need to take a look at. Within the system, you can actually pull up those supporting documents out here for your visibility as well, too. So let's just say in this scenario here, that you wanted to search and find information in regards to this respective topic or on the supporting document, you actually have the keyword search ability right in the system. So say it's our scenario, you can keyword search, I'm going to essentially search budget with initial, actually, let's use board. So I see keyword search a specific keyword, keyword here, and it actually populates it within the actual document itself. And so what that does allow for you to do is now actually see where this word is existing, and actually you can click right on this helping pointer, the keywords within the document, and actually drops it down to you right in area, and then it highlights it for you as well. So it just makes it easy for navigation when you're having to have those, you know, larger documents that make up your board packet, that how to navigate as you're having those board discussions. A couple of the key pieces here that you can also even add some for the annotations, so you can do your own personal highlighting. If you know that within this discussion here, if you specifically want to highlight this paragraph, you can do so, and then you can even add your own personal notes here on the side. You can actually add your own little personal notes, so as I have here, these are, this relates back to August discussion. Right, so essentially, this allows you to easily navigate that and be able to have your own personal notes and annotations. Again, this is all stored digitally, but if you would like to, understand that this doesn't take away from the element if you prefer to have a paper copy in hand. You can still be able to print off the entire agenda with the packet, including your own notes and comments and annotations that you added for the upcoming meeting as well for you, too. Last but not least, if there's been, if you're going to have an agenda with multiple sections and all, and there's getting this scenario where this is like, you know, like an eighty, ninety-page agenda, maybe even a hundred in certain cases, easy just by clicking here on the left side as you go through discussions, as you can see, it actually drops you right down to where your discussion, that section, or even where you're having discussions, you're starting at, excuse me, that specific item. So the last piece I always have of the conversation piece that comes up is like, well, I see it on your screen now, you're showing it to me, looks like it's pretty small, can you make it a little bit bigger? Yeah, absolutely. You can actually blow it up the screen, so it actually becomes a little bit bigger. And then if you ever need to just like shift it and move it around, you have... And then if you ever need to just like shift and move it around, you have that agenda for a little while, too. Any questions that you have?
I don't think so.
So the last piece I'll really go just touch on, this has been something that's become very commonly, and again, I'm not sure this is a hundred percent in this scenario, but if you also, if you do, you can also manage public comments essentially from the platform. So that way, as you're preparing for an upcoming conversation, this can actually be immediately added to the agenda before the upcoming meeting. So if there's any comment section that you're having a public, it can actually usually register right on your public facing page of doing that. So as I showed this by really quick example, I'll load the public facing page in my demo, uh, facing page in my demo site. As you can see, there's a share your comments section. And so essentially just by clicking on that, and going to like the request to speak, you can actually register that here, and so that once someone submits they want to speak in, which meaning they like to speak in, you actually will receive here on the backend about what they want to speak about. So in this scenario here, we realized that John Doe wants to speak about zoning issues within downtown. So you can actually see this information, you can post it on your site, navigate people, if they actually want to have any questions, if they, um, once they register and submit themselves, they'll actually go over here to the system so that in preparation with upcoming meeting, you know that John Doe's gonna be speaking about X, Y, and Z regarding the planning issues downtown.
Wow, that's cool.
So, point again, just my question for tonight, I just want to walk through getting simplicity, especially cutting out some of that paper costs on how it can be utilized, not only from the front end, for the public, but also on the backend. And the main, main key thing is that you actually get your entire agenda, you can get it mobilely on your cell phone, you can use it on a tablet, you can use it within your home croc on devices. But at any point, you always will have access to the most updated agenda at any point, so again, you're not having to re-print paper. But in addition to that, you actually have your own specific username where you can make your own personal annotations, and also your notes, that you can actually be able to utilize that during meeting discussions. And at any point, well, as I'm showing similarly on the front end, through the backend, if you want to reference old notes from previous meetings, it's as simple as just going over here to the search symbol and looking up a conversation that you may have had in August, so that you can reference that in the conversation. So that's just want to give a brief background of our platform. Any other questions that you have?
Wow.
I think five of us is a good thing.
Yes.
That's, that's a lot.
Yeah, I, I know, I tried to get like the really quick version of like what I went through with Tiffany in an hour, and I tried to condense it down to fifteen minutes. But definitely just the crux of it. Again, like the crux of what I highlight, just how simple it is to get the updated agenda, how you have your own little site, and that you can actually be able to make edits to your own agenda without having to print out all of those pieces of paper.
So with this site, would it take the place of our current site?
No.
No?
This would be a link to this.
Okay.
Like, we would have our website, and then when we went to minutes and agendas, or, you know, the town board, it would link to this.
Okay. Cause my next question was gonna be, does this have capabilities to hold our ordinances and stuff like that? But if we're, if it's a completely different site, then I understand.
Yeah, great question. It actually can't hold your ordinances. So I'm actually gonna use Towne Carbon as an example. So they actually have it here where it's a document library, where you can actually be able to hold, how to fill what it is. Those specs gotta improve a little bit. Then as you can see, that's where they have the ordinances and resolutions here. So I'll drop down and take a look at that. They have it in the folder here, and that's where they have information, like the ordinances and resolutions.
So we would be able to upload all of our ordinances, our resolutions, and everything into this also.
I mean, if somebody had a question about one of those, they could post it on here.
Share your comment.
We could be able to.
So if they were linking up a resolution or an ordinance, and they had a question about something, how would they go about, I mean, could they post something here that would go to all the board members, or to, you know?
There are really good questions. So in that scenario, is this like a general question, or a question where they pose it like as a request to speak at a conversation that they have?
And it doesn't really go either way.
Very good.
Either way, like, they just have the question, they would like answer it, or they would want to speak at the, on the agenda at the next meeting?
Great question. So what I do recall is, and they didn't do it here, but I'm actually gonna use my example of my own demo site, what you can actually do is actually still indicate here where if they have any questions regarding ordinances and resolutions, they can actually directly, so you can actually like link your email, so where they click on that, it actually populates it so that this information in this email can actually be sent to the board for upcoming discussions. So they can actually just come here, actually reference a resolution that's posted on your site, and then just send an email to everyone so that they can actually address whatever the matter is, or whatever the question is, that someone from the community had.
Yeah, that, that answers the question, that's true.
So Tiffany, does this make it paperless? I mean, by using, using their tablets, this all just builds out, you don't have to print anything?
No.
Okay. Or?
But you do have an option to print it out if you do want a copy, but yes.
Um, I just happened to, cause we, Cliff and I had been talking about the planning, planning or workshops or whatever they do right before Enid, city council member meetings. So I went on to their, their website and checked out, you know, what their workshops entail, and they use this exact same format also. So. Can, Evan, can you go for pricing?
Yeah, great question. So the pricing structure is six thousand per year. There's an eight percent annual renewal, uh, annual renewal, um, increase. Get, we can negotiate that, you can discuss that, not a problem at all, especially understanding state statutes are different, especially with Oklahoma. But essentially, six thousand dollars per year.
I think that's worth it.
Oh, can you go over how you do like the minutes right then and there, and you vote?
Yeah, absolutely. So essentially it gives you the live minutes view, where you can actually have an outline of the minutes. And so from an administrative perspective, you can actually simply take roll call here. So you can have all the board members, as well as other supporting members that might also be involved, that you also would like to also include as individuals who are attending a meeting. And essentially you can take the roll call here. As you're also going through each part of the meeting, this is actually where you can actually simply as can be put, actually be able to indicate what the motion is. So let's just say here, it was moved by this board member, Commissioner Jeff Schaefer, and then it was here from my other council member, Chris Forsberg. And so by simply clicking down on here, you can actually take the vote. Mind you, I have it set right now where the person responsible for taking minutes, that person enters the vote, but if you all would like to, you can also be able to vote within your login screen, too, during the meeting. And from that standpoint, once all that information is entered, simply you can move forward and just simply show the results of the upcoming vote as well, too. So if you also want to show from like a presentation view, if anyone is showing this in a demonstration, or you're showing this, you can also ensure the public what that motion was here in this presentation screen. And if the mayor continue on proceeding with the rest of the meeting, as you go through each out, or each portion of the meeting.
No more reading?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
No more reading or writing?
No more, no more.
You guys, you guys will have to keep using those. I'll be the only one that don't. Talk about motion cards.
Any other question that you have? I'm sorry.
Are there training sessions for board members then?
Yes.
I'm sure Kelly can read my title better than she can my name.
Yes, that is included, is training.
Wow.
Yeah, great point. I, I should have highlighted that. Yeah, there's no additional calls for training. Everything that I share is through the six thousand dollar, that includes training, not even just initial onboarding and implementation training. But that continues, you know, like having the customer service, anytime that you want to train or maybe learn a new module, we have a direct team you can reach out to that will support you. There's no additional cost for that either.
So as personnel changes, the board changes, that training would be kept up to date?
That's great. Well, the, the contractor would renew every year, too.
Right, right, yeah.
Any other questions I can ask, that I can help to answer or answer for you?
I can.
This is, this is just all software, right?
Yes.
They're not supplying any hardware.
Okay, great question. Yeah, it is all, yeah.
It's an actual software, or is it just a login?
It's, it's, no, it's login, I mean, you log in.
Web-based.
It's web-based.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm impressed.
Any other questions that can be used?
I like this.
David, you have any questions?
No.
Is this what you were? David, is this what you were?
I'll finish.
I'm sorry, Tiffany.
Is this what you were looking for, like?
Something, yeah, yeah. This, this, this is a home run.
Yeah, this is, I was looking at first base, and this is a grand slam.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it, you know, the six thousand a year is, is a lot cheaper than I was expecting.
Yes, same.
Well, I don't know what we spend on copying and, and paper costs, but, I mean.
We tell a few trees.
Yeah, we do. Mm-hmm. Well, and I don't, like I said, I don't know what you guys pay per copy, but this is gonna, this is gonna save the town money, too.
And time.
Well, I said I didn't have any questions, Tiffany. I, I will have questions in the training sessions.
Right.
Well, I, I, yeah, sure. I think everybody will.
But is there anything about this that you, you have a question about?
No, I understand everything, I understand everything that Evan said, and, and, uh.
And I'm an IT savvy, and I understood what he said.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's very, very simple. I, I can do it.
Evan, thanks, man. You did a good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Hey, Billy, thank you for the opportunity for this today, and also, again, thank you. I know I convinced everything down in fifteen minutes that took, took me an hour, so thank you. Uh, if you also have any questions, darling, please reach out to me. I'll give Tiffany my, uh, give direct information, so if you have any further questions following today's presentation, feel free to say you'd reach out, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Evan.
Hey, thank you so much. Enjoyed the virtual interview.
Discussion will be possible action to approve the purchase of the meeting software. I make a motion to purchase the, of the meeting software.
Second.
Roll call, please. Hold on. Whoops, should we discuss? Yes?
Which?
I don't care that you have a, you have a first and a second, so yeah, you can.
Okay. And I'm, I'm with you guys. I like this. Are we looking at, cause I brought it hardware, are we looking at getting like Chromebooks or something for each board member?
Yes.
And the staff?
Yes.
To be able to, so, and all that will be interactive with each other and with this staff?
Yes. Right now, um, I'm in, in, uh, working on projects with our IT people. Uh, one of them is going to be, is getting, you know, the Chromebooks or not, maybe not necessarily Chromebooks, but some type of laptop.
Some type of laptop, yeah.
Um, and then we're all gonna integrate into Microsoft three sixty-five. That will also create everybody their own personal email address, including board members. Um, and it'll also allow us to, um, interact, you know, send information, um, just different things like that, so.
Great. Okay. I want to.
So I didn't ask.
I want to have a question.
But, uh, is, is this like a website where the public can access it?
This right here?
Mm-hmm.
So it'll be, there will be a link on our website. So they go to hensioke.org, and I don't know, we'll probably put it under border, you know, board, town board.
What you want.
And then it'll be, you know, where they can go and look at, you know, minutes and agendas, you know, or, you know, things like that.
Okay, so if there's an agenda in progress, will, um, will it have to be like published before the public can access it?
It'll have to be publicly published.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if they'd be able to see it if it was just in work. Okay.
Not until you publicly publish it.
Okay.
And you would have, I mean, as the town clerk, you would be the one to publicly post that, so when it's complete.
But as, as board members, we would each see the agenda build, correct?
Correct. As long as she has shared it, um, not you. Like, which most of them she would probably share as, I mean, cause we could be looking at today's, you know, two days ago, we could have been looking at today's, and Cliff decided, oh, well, not in this meeting, but in March, before I forget, I want to put on there that I want to talk about this. So he could actually go out to March's meeting and put that out there, and then, and things like that.
It's a, I know he didn't say this, but it's like there's a template, and so we can set up each meeting, you know, like out for the rest of the year, and say, you know, some, you know something's coming up in July, that you're gonna want to talk about. You can go ahead and put it on July.
Wow. That's great.
Did you attend the one-hour session with Tiffany and Shelley good?
No, Shelley didn't.
Shelley didn't? Oh, I'm sorry.
Kelly, I guess. No.
So my question is, when he was talking about, somebody can send in an email with their concerns, request, or whatever, would that go straight to Kelly? And then she posts it? I mean, like, how does that get addressed? Because now they don't have to come to a meeting, they can just send in?
No, they're gonna send in a comment, and that they want to speak at this meeting.
Okay, that's just for them to request to come?
Yes, and they want to speak about this topic. Then he went, when we was talking about resolution, ordinances, he was talking that you could put on that, you know, if you have any questions about these documents or anything like that, you can email, you can call, put the town hall number, or you can email. And that email, you can actually do a group email, um, where that would actually go out to, say, all five board members, Kelly, myself, you, you know, whatever is set up for that.
Okay.
This still requires posting here.
Yes, yes. Yeah, there, I mean, that's pretty much the only print that we would have to do.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
All right, Cliff?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Going to deep discussion with possible action to approve the purchase of a time clock plus program for the employees' time tracking.
So I've had, um, there's been some, like, even with the state auditor, we've been having to pull, actually, cause, you know, you guys had your motion cards. Well, we have physical time cards where people put in their, you know, the time they came to work, the time they left, you know, their hours, vacation, whatever. And so C I S T, um, has a, they're, they work with Time Clock Plus, who's a software, you know, web-based program for time accounting. And so, um, this would integrate with our system, where people, each employee would have their own login, um, and their G I S mapped on where they clock in at, so they can't be in Kingfisher and clock in saying they're working here. Um, it'll also be able to, I mean, they'll be able to do vacation requests, um, sick time request, anything, and the reporting is a lot better than going and grabbing time cards and making copies of all of them.
Absolutely. What's the cost on that?
The cost on that, it's in your packet. The first, um, the first year, the initial cost is kind of pricey, but that includes all training and everything, and that rate there is ten thousand two hundred and ten dollars. Um, after that, each year is only twenty-two hundred.
Wow, that's a big job.
Now, do they do this, the employees can clock in, say, on their mobile phone?
They can clock in on their mobile phone, they can clock in on a computer, if we have a computer, you know, there. But, and they actually have time clocks, you can use two, to where you can do it on a time clock. But, um, I like the mobile app, I mean, where they're, and if they miss a clock in, then they have to go to their supervisor, and their supervisor has to fix it.
I like that. They don't go in there and perp it by themselves and do it.
Yes. And then what, at the end of the pay, you know, the end of the week, um, their, their manager has to approve all the Yes, and then what, at the end of the pay, you know, the end of the week, um, their, their manager has to approve all the time, um, so it's marked with manager's approval.
So, let's just say somebody that works, I'm just gonna pull an example out of the street shop, and they clock in at eight o'clock, but they're still at home, getting ready to take the kids to school, will it, will it flag that or something?
Yes, it will. They would have to be within, like, you would set your parameter of where they're supposed to clock in at.
Okay. And it would flag it if they weren't in there, okay.
Can you set up the, like, if, like, again, with the, uh, water department, they have to go out to the well, would they come in here, clock in, or would they clock in?
They would have to clock in by their office building.
Okay.
Okay, let me ask you, you have a good point, so, if they're, if they are at the plant, they go, summon to the plant to fix something, well, I guess they'd already be clocked in, they'd go by the office and clock in first. Okay.
Yes.
I'm with you.
Wouldn't that help put some of them in, clock in a little bit early, because if you have to say they have to be at the plant at eight o'clock, they're gonna have to come in town to make sure they come in town to clock in, and then drive out to the plant, correct?
Yeah, but most of the plan is never, I mean.
Well, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, like, say, you get in here at seven forty-five in the morning, but your shift doesn't start till eight, the system has a thing where they can, where you cannot clock in early. Like, you may clock in at seven forty-five, but it will put you clocking in at eight.
So what if you have to come in early to work?
Then your manager can go in and fix that.
I would like that.
Cliff, I have a question for Tiffany. Tiffany, how will this, how will this time accounting, don't get me wrong, I'm for it, I'm getting ready to vote on it, okay? But I, I want you to tell us how it's gonna help you more effectively manage your workforce.
Um, so, manage? Well, you'll be able to see where they're clocking in and things like that, not only that, I mean, if you have a question, we have the G I S tracking also that you can, you know.
Okay, yeah.
And also, you can see when they're, um, when they're leaving in the evenings.
Okay, I've got a follow-up question, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Okay, uh, are you familiar enough with this to know whether or not, if you remember, I asked you a question a while back, just like a week or two ago, about, you, you mentioned, uh, I think it was at our last meeting, you mentioned some repairs on streets and alleys, and I asked you, do you have any, or where's that documented? And you told me on the, on the time cards, and then when the audit team requested those time cards, and you copied me on that, I was able to see exactly what you were talking about. So my question is, that follow-up question is, is this time clock plus program, is it gonna have some of that data captured somewhere? And the reason I'm asking is, in my mind, as you manage your workforce, you're gonna be looking at, you know, who's burning the most hours on what type of projects? And, and how much money are we spending on those projects? You, you see where I'm going? Your time cards should correlate to your work records.
I agree, yes.
And it'll help me out tremendously.
And their time, they did not say from eight to nine, I worked on a pot bowl, or from this or that, but it did show you what they did during the day.
Yeah, some gentle stuff, yeah.
Yes, so, what I get every day now, from, because I did this in the past, and I brought it back, we was at our managers' meetings, and I said, okay, I, I want to start this back up, is, they give me daily reports, so that way, I know what they've done during that day.
Okay, you're talking about my email?
Mm-hmm, I get an email from all of the, all of the managers telling me, well, except for fire department, because, you know, that's, they do, but they tell me, um, like, water department, you know, they changed out ten meters today, or, you know, just different things like that.
Yeah, so this database is not gonna help us in that area, and you're saying you don't need it?
I don't, I don't remember, David, if there's an actual spot where they can put in notes what they did during that day.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that would be so helpful if they could, and you could pull data, uh, you know, our auditors, Crawford, they could, if they wanted to, they look at payroll, right?
Yes.
They might want to look at stuff, and maybe, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here, but I really, I really, really liked what I saw here in, in the read-ads, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm very good with this. I agree with Tiffany also, I think the ten thousand is a little pricey, but then they dropped the renewal, the annual, back down to where it's, it's very reasonable, and, uh.
Well, what this also is, our payroll clerk has to manually go in and put the time and calculate the overtime in her head, and, and different things, and this right here is gonna do it for, for her, it's just gonna upload right, it, because I learned this when I worked for C I C, it uploads right into the system, um, and it calculates the overtime hours, it does everything for you.
I saw some of the math that you guys were doing on the time cards, and I'm thinking, oh, you know, this is gonna be a time saver, it really is.
Yeah.
And.
And it'll probably pay for itself.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it will over time, and one more question, do you recommend us to buy this?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'm done, Cliff.
Okay.
I got the motions, you guys are done. Okay? Uh, make a motion to approve the purchase of the C I C time clock plus program for employee time tracking.
Second. Roll call, please.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
E, discussion with possible action to approve a quote on the demo of the concrete at the fire station, haul off, grade to drain, and install grass sod in the space. You will find that in your packet.
Yeah, Cliff, we got farmers on the third part.
So we had asked for a couple of local, um, people to, to, to give us a quote on this, I've only received the one from Grade Works, Chris Goff. The other one was David Fook, said that we haven't received anything from him, so, um, and I know, um, we need a, I mean, they're getting close on the fire station, so.
So the bid is nine thousand eight hundred dollars to demo the concrete at the fire station, haul off and grade to drain, install approximately twelve hundred square feet of solid slab sod.
I know we talked about the, our workers, um, breaking up the concrete, but being up next to that building, I would rather us, um, not do it and risk damaging anything with the building.
I make a motion to hire, Grade Works. Grade Works, to demo the concrete at the fire station, haul off, grade to drain, and install the grass sod in the space for ninety-eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hello?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
F, is discussion with possible action to appoint emergency manager.
So I talked to Ryan Deveridge at, um, nine-one-one, he's the deputy, or who was the, I don't know exactly what county yet, but he's, um, he sent me this proposal, and after linking at it, I mean, we're linking at eight hundred dollars a month, and I was talking to Aaron, our police chief, and him and I, um, we believed that between the two of us, I've been freed up by a lot of staff in here, by the staff, you know, because we're full staff in here, I've been freed up, that between him and I, that we would have time to do this. Um, I would not expect any additional pay, but maybe give a little bit of that eight hundred dollars a month to him.
You all would be co?
Co.
Co-emergency managers?
Yes, and we would attend all the training and, and all of that.
There's a lot of training, too.
Yeah, there is. Well, I've attended some of them in the process, so.
I know, I would rather see us stay with local, our local people, than, because if we have a disaster that's county-wide, I think we need somebody up here to help take care of us.
Well, it's not, if I may, it's not just that, it's being prepared for one, when one happens, so, for example, uh, what I understand is that there are all the classes and the, the paperwork and grants, and all these things that have to be in line when a disaster does happen. If all these boxes aren't checked, then, you know, then FEMA is gonna say, well, you, you weren't, you didn't do these things, so, you know, you're out, and, um, I, I, I don't care which way it goes.
In my, in my past twenty-one years, I've worked five disasters with FEMA and, you know, both of them emergency manager.
Well, so she's already doing that.
Sure, you're already doing that.
No, I think it's, that's, yeah.
So.
I think if there's a disaster, people's gonna call Tiffany and Aaron, anybody.
True.
And I know, um, he is working on moving here, so, just so you guys are not worried about him living in Kingfisher, he is, um, working on moving here.
So I'm gonna make a motion, does, anybody got anything before I motion?
I'm good.
I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Tiffany Tillman and Erin Fitz as co-emergency managers for the town. I'll second that. Roll call, please.
What amount for seven?
Yeah.
Eight hundred.
Well, no.
No.
So, with you doing that, can I, um, because I would really like to, that's one of those job descriptions that I would like to get approved by you guys, so the amount on that, can we do that after I do the job description for next month?
Yeah.
Would that work?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I just didn't know if I need to include that in my motion.
I second that. I second that. Okay, roll call, please.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
G, discussion with possible action to approve the installation of water well at the cemetery for the new restroom facility.
So, you guys, we emailed you out a quote, but that included an actual wellhouse, um, putting the pressure tank in an actual wellhouse. So today, um, Bert called me this morning and talked to me about making it to where, um, it was a, where we put the pressure tank inside the utility closet in that restroom facility, and so, we met with Lang and with, um, Keith today, um, and then they brought us this revised quote, this would include putting that pressure tank into that facility where we would not have to heat something else, and then running the line from the northwest corner of the, where they would drill the northwest corner.
Do we have an updated?
Yeah, it's the colored one.
Started out at eleven?
Started out at eleven.
Eleven, eight.
Eight fifty.
And this is ninety-seven, ninety-five.
Okay.
Tiffany, does that include, um, it looks like on here it does, everything.
Except electrical.
But it does include the wiring going out there, doesn't it?
Yes, but the electrician.
With stranded wire, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, electrician's just got to connect it, okay.
And it also includes putting, I asked them, I would like a frosted-free hydrant out there, close to where the well is, so that way, when we store a mower out there, we'll have something to be able to, um, you know, clean the mower off, hose down the mower, or anything like that.
Tiffany, I was asked today, not long before I got here, about, didn't we start a water line going that direction, I don't know.
I don't even know where it ended, I know it's in the middle of Scotty's field, um, is what I've been told, um, and that was done without even D E Q permits.
That was a question that I was leading up to, is, is what happened to the Scotty Hyatt thing that was going on, did it not pass legal review or something?
Um, there was never an easement gained, I didn't have anything to do with it, in fact, they were doing it and stopped when I found out, because I'm like, no, you have to have an easement, you have to have D E Q, um, permits approved, um, and so it stopped, and it never went any further.
Okay, so.
It's from our, yeah.
So this is probably our, financially, our better way to go, you think?
Yes.
I get it.
Does that come up?
Yeah, yeah.
You're asking, too?
Yeah.
Well, it, I will tell you, this is gonna be non-potable water, so that we don't have to meet, um, the drinking water rules.
You know, I, I, I respect Scotty for volunteering to, you know, let us do that, I mean, it's, I didn't know, you know, at the time, we've talked about this, what, a year ago?
Are you talking about, are you talking about using Scotty's water well?
Yeah.
Or what?
Oh, I thought you meant the line that went.
I'm talking about, he said we could use his water well, and I didn't, you know, when he said that, I'm thinking, that sure is nice of him, and I respect him for that. I just, I just wondered at the time if it would pass legal review for us to.
We had some people look at it, and they, they encouraged us very much to just drill ours.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
One question I have, one says a hundred feet, and the other one says sixty feet, how far is the water?
What do you mean, a hundred feet and sixty feet?
One's, one's drilling a hundred feet?
Okay, so this is the other, this is, um, you banks?
Right.
We had them link out it, and, um, they gave us the first quote, which is the same, similar to the first quote that we got from Lang, and there was a three thousand dollar difference. I know one says a hundred, and one, they go off of area, like, drilling permits of how far it took people in the area to go down to water.
So is the water that far? Do they have to drill that far?
I don't know.
Now, he said in here, he didn't think we would have to go over.
Any deeper than sixty?
Any deeper than sixty, yeah, but I will tell you.
Because I live just a little ways that well, not a little ways, three miles, and I, my well is only twenty-three foot deep.
Yeah, out in that area, I will tell you that water's kind of hit and miss, and it's very alkaline, got tons of alkaline in it, you know? Just through that, that area, I'm not sure.
So we're not even sure if they're gonna hit water?
I don't know, what happens if they don't hit water?
Well, it says in there, if, if they don't hit water, then.
Yeah, they price the extra feet by, by one foot.
Right, no, I saw, yeah, I saw that, but, I mean, do they just keep drilling till they hit something?
He said, he said, well, he did say it's, you know, he looked at sixty feet, but he said, well, just cross our fingers we hit water. So I think that's with it drilling anything, I mean, there's always pockets where.
If you miss the well, then you gotta repay for it to re, uh, re-drill another well, is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah, if you miss it, you know, you can say stop at a hundred feet, and if there's no water, then you gotta pay for it and then move over, and, and drill it all again.
Because doing that, you can't use a little witch to pump the water. I know it works, but I don't know if a sixty-foot work.
Well, we need, we need water out there.
Yes, we do, oh, yes.
I feel like we're gambling all of a sudden.
Well, I think we are, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, I, I mean, it's, I don't think we really have a choice, we.
There's no water out there now? Really?
There are, I will say this, there are some old hand pump wells in the cemetery, the pumps have been long gone. But back when I was a kid, those worked, people would go take fire arrangements out for Memorial Day and get water out of them, you had hand pumps.
Well, that makes me feel better.
And water divorces.
And water horses. Wow, he's saying, he's saying that to me, because I'm close to you, too. David?
Sure.
You said you have this?
Yeah, I've got the motion card filled out already, but you guys threw me a bunch of curveballs here. So, so I've got the motion written out, like it is on the agenda, but we need to accept one of these two proposals. and the money.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I, you know, with the new proposals, they changed it, the only change was moving that tank, the pressure tank, inside.
And not building a wellhouse.
And not building a wellhouse, okay, and that dropped the Lang down to ninety, which one do you guys want us to use? The Lang ninety-seven, ninety-five?
In my opinion, yes.
I think so.
Okay.
Is that who looked at it, Tiffany?
It's the one we got revisited, right?
Yes, but I will tell you, Lang has been very responsive.
That's a good idea, then. Uh, use, let's see, Lang is a, uh, well, they're a contractor. Using Lang. What kind of company are they, well-drilling?
Enid?
Okay.
You guys marry with me, I'll get it done here.
I've done a lot, I do a lot of work in Hennessy.
At ninety-seven, ninety-five. Okay, you guys ready?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the installation of a water well at the cemetery for the new restroom facility using Lang well drilling at nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Dave?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold? Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Number seven, new business, any matter not known, which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of the posting of the agenda according to section three, one, one-dash-nine, title twenty-five O.S. Thank you. The seaters are terrible. If no comments, then we have citizen comments. Counsel portion report. David?
I got one, Cliff. Tiffany, this one's for you. At our last meeting, you said you wanted to get a legal review done on the records request person that's gonna be, you know, that's gonna have that as an extra duty or an additional responsibility. Did you get that legal review done?
No, I have not yet.
Thank you, that's it, Cliff.
'Cause we talked, I, I was actually in communication with the state auditor's office with all of that, too.
Okay, yeah, they're probably gonna be full of advice, that would be my guess.
Yeah.
Harold? Bert? Randy?
Um, the only thing I've got is, uh, do we have an update on the status of our storm siren upgrade?
Yes. Um, they have been installed, except for the one at Bullfoot Park and the one out by Ike's Acres, and we are in the process, Tiffany, correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause you were handling that, but, in the process of getting easement right away out of Ike's Acres, because these, all of the others were either on town property or where we already had easements.
Okay.
So, uh, three or four, Jack, do you remember you took pictures of?
There's four, there's four up and operating.
Up, not operating, I don't think, but they're up, but, yeah.
And they got the-
To be operating.
They can do the system setup in here and everything, so.
I just know we're getting close to that season again, I was curious.
Is the, what's, why can't you put the Ike's Acre one where the old one is?
Well, the old one is at the very east end of Oakwood Drive. At the time, it was put in, in the nineteen-seventies, uh, it was put on a board member's private property who no longer owns the property, and it is virtually landlocked. There is not a road-
They built a building in front of it.
There's not a road to it, you have to access it from Ike's Acres across the field, so.
Okay.
And the thoughts, uh, on it being right there on the north part of Ike's Acres, it would serve, even though Ike's Acres, Miller Heights is not city limits, it would cover a radius that would include Oakwood Drive, Ike's Acres, and Miller Heights, and, and better serve the public, city limits or not, so.
While we were looking, OGNB pretty much told us that that was not a good spot.
Yeah.
So, we had to go back and try to figure out.
They've all been easy to get electricity and things, too, except that one, so, that's what we've-
Thank you.
I have a couple things, I saw the, uh, street sweeper out the other day, so, thank you very much for the town to get the street sweeper out, really appreciate that. I wanna say thank you to Jack for the deal that he did on the fire department, I really enjoyed that, thank you very much. And there's some of those-
There's that one guy down there that kinda run this bit. He ain't even listening to you.
I'm joking.
He said James, he said James not even here, that's what I said.
I heard. It was good.
Uh, also, I wanna give a, a good shout-out to this, uh, water department for fixing those leaks and really taking care of that. Uh, that's a, a really good job, and I, I know that was a dirty, nasty job, and I really appreciate that, them getting that and taking care of it and getting it done, so, thank you very much. That's all I have. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? Nobody's gonna second it?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Oh, you made it?
Yes.
What's that?
Yes.
Cliff made the motion.
Cliff made the motion to adjourn.
Okay. And-
I second regardless.
Okay. Okay.
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yeah.
Bert?
Uh, Hennessy Utilities Authority Board and Trustees Regular Meeting, February eighth at six P.M., Town Hall, Council Room. Number one, call to order, roll call, please.
Okay. Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Two, considerable approval of consent agenda. A, approval of amendments of January meeting. B, approval of the claims as follows. Number one, January purchase orders, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. February purchase orders, a hundred and thirty-five thousand forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. February meter deposit refund, zero. Any questions about the consent agenda? If not, I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Number three, citizen comments. Number four, other scheduled business discussed, except approved, denied, rejected, and/or take action on the following. There's nothing on that. New business, any matter not known, which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of the posting of the agenda according to section three, one, one-dash-nine, title twenty-five O.S. Citizen comments? Counsel report? David?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Harold? Bert?
No, sir.
Randy?
I have anything.
Okay, neither do I. Motion to adjourn?
Second. Third, we shall.
Before it's said second, that's the thing.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.